Under public communications, we have ten people registered to speak.
Now, I won't read a lengthy statement, but I would like to remind our speakers that you will have three minutes. I do adhere strictly to the three minutes. So if you have points to make, I would encourage you to make those within the time constraints that we have. Before I introduce the first speaker, I'm going to read policy. One of our speakers wanted to provide this to the board. We are aware of it, but I'm going to read this for public. This is Kansas statute. And it states that the Board of Education of any unified school district, by adoption of a resolution, may close any school building at any time the board determines that the building should be closed to improve the school system of the unified school district. The Board of Education may close more than one school building in one resolution. A resolution adopted pursuant to this section shall require a majority vote of the members of the Board of Education and shall require no other approval. There also associated with that is board policy. Once again, I'm just going to be brief. There are only a few lines that I want you to be aware of. Number one, the administration is responsible for assessing the utilization of school facilities and other resources, one purpose being to identify schools which might be discontinued as attendance centers. With that being said, that's both state policy, BoE policy. I would like to welcome our first speaker, Misty Bruckner. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I kind of jumped ahead. Misty, please wait. Our first speaker on, under public communication, is Charity Chapman.
Hi. I chose Emerson first because it's a pure magnet and second because of its small size. Being a pure magnet and everyone having to apply to me means a better quality of student and parent, more parent involvement, and an altogether better learning atmosphere. I didn't know what open ed was when I chose Emerson, but I quickly learned and fell in love with it. I believe this is the case with many current Emerson families, and I'm saddened that most of the open ed curriculum has been lost to no child left behind. However, we hold strong to our roots at Emerson. I believe in open ed. I believe it thrives best in small classes and small environments, places where everyone knows your name. Expecting children to go from Emerson's small family environment to the big city environment that will be the new Lewis neighborhood magnet is ludicrous and quite simply will not happen. I speak for the vast majority of Emerson parents when I say we will not go. You say this process started eighteen months ago. That is in part a huge lie. Boundary discussions may have began-
Ms. Chapman, I'm sorry. May I interrupt you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. First of all, we are glad to hear your comments. We are respectful to you, and I would appreciate it if you would extend that same respect to the board. Please do not call any of us liars or that we've stated anything that's a lie. I would welcome to hear your opinion, but again, I encourage you to please be respectful to this board. Now, you may continue.
I'll do my best. Do I still have my time?
You still have your time, but I will interrupt you if you-
I'll do my best, and stop me if you need to.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
I feel boundary discussions may have begun eighteen months ago, but conversations about closing schools did not start until last November, a mere three months ago. That is, as far as the public knows. We don't know what's been discussed or decided in small group meetings. And if all of this has been thought out and planned so well, then why did it take up until last week for you to realize that you needed to postpone the vote and reschedule Choices Fair so you could hold the public hearing first? The community meetings, in my opinion, again, were a sham. To simply say we gave you a chance to be involved, the hundred-and-fifty-page document compiled of comments and concerns from the community meetings was released just hours before the final focus group meeting. I'd love to know how you expected anyone, let alone people who work full-time and go straight from work to the meetings, to have had a chance to actually read it and consider any of the comments or concerns. Budget? You want to talk budget? How is $750 a month for a car on top of your salary budget-friendly? That's $9,000 a year!
Ma'am, once again, if you would keep your comments, it's not here to discuss staff. No comments should be directed to any staff member. If you have nothing further to say, we respect the fact that you've let us know you don't approve. Now, if there's anything further, again, please continue, but otherwise, I will ask you to just take your seat.
Not to mention the tens of thousands of dollars spent on out-of-district training and travel. Is all of that training truly necessary? I run a family of six, and let me tell you, when the budget's tight, we stay home. I feel that you still have a chance to redeem yourselves and begin to earn back the trust of this community. Stand up for what's right. Begin by voting no on any and all supposals to close schools. And honestly, supposals? Was it necessary to make up a special word for these plans?
Ma'am, thank you. Thank you for sharing with us.
Form a volunteer committee to keep schools open. You have a roomful of volunteers here right now. Look at each and every school's budget individually.
Ma'am, thank you.
See where it can be trimmed.
Our next speaker is Amy Lawson. This, this, just a moment. Just a moment. This meeting, this meeting is in public. There will be no further outbreaks. I need you to understand, when someone is speaking, it is within my realm as board president to stop them. Again, if you can't withhold your comments, then I would invite you as well, that you may just leave. Okay, thank you, sir. Now, our next speaker is Amy Lawson.
Good evening, fellow community members, equally concerned and devoted parents. I'm glad you're all here. I want to let you all know that it is not too late to regain the trust of this community. It's not too late to decide that this process is not at all beneficial to the community as a whole. I have to say that if the public had been made fully aware of your intentions to bring an outside corporation in to determine what schools would close, I promise you, the protests, petitions, and attendance of these meetings would be tenfold. I'm not sure what the point is of the public input portion of this process. To others and myself, it's clear that it was decided long ago that what the community wants is not what the board is going to enact. May I remind you, please, that you are elected officials. You were chosen by us to represent the voice of us as a public. You are trusted to carry out what our wishes are, and we don't wish for this. I can't fathom how any community is going to be more prosperous, structured, or advantageous with abandoned buildings sitting in the middle of them. It makes no sense to close down elementary schools on the west side and expect parents who live on that side of town to take their kids out to the northeast side of town. As a mother of four, not one of my children will stay with Wichita Public Schools if their school closes. Not a threat whatsoever, it's just my feelings. I don't know why I do stand up here tonight and speak when my words are going in one ear and out the other, but by me standing here, I know that I've stood up for what I believe in. I know that I'm not just throwing in the towel and walking away. That's one of the virtues that Emerson teaches. It's the virtue of perseverance. Another virtue that is taught is integrity, which is doing the right thing because it's the right thing, not because you stand to gain something. This is your chance to redeem integrity. This is your chance to regain our trust. You have a whole community here willing to sit down with you, to come up with solutions, and to work with you, and I promise, we won't charge you hundreds of thousands of dollars. When our board members are quoted as saying, "There isn't anything that parents can do at this point to change my mind," it tells all of us that we're not being represented. By voting in favor of the closures, you make it clear that you do not value your position on the board, and it is inherently obvious that you will not be reelected. Emerson, like all of the schools on the closure list, does not deserve to be closed. It deserves the same respect that it shows a community. Emerson is an absolute jewel. The staff, tremendous. The parent involvement is unlike anything I've ever seen. Like I said, it's not too late to vote no and regain the trust of this community. Thank you.
There is no applause. If necessary, the room will be cleared. Now, I am asking you, once again, to respect the guidelines that have been set. There is no applause. Our next speaker, our next speaker is Mary Dean.
I would like to remind the school board members and Superintendent Allison that the school bond issue would not have been supported overwhelmingly by people if they had known that their schools were targeted to be closed. The school, the 2008 bond issue was supported because we were told that African-American children in the triple, in the assigned attendance areas of AAA would no longer have to be forced bust. The 2008 bond issue was supported because we were told that the existing facilities, schools, would be upgraded. We now know that Mueller Aerospace and Engineering Discovery Magnet School was left out when it came to upgrading it, and that the school has existing problems with water issues, mold, and a horrible smell since 2006. I received this information under the Kansas Open Records Act. The new high school, one of two proposed, not five, was a part of the bond issue, was designed to open as a comprehensive high school that would relieve crowding at Heights, Southeast, and elsewhere. Two months ago, Superintendent Allison told the advisory group studying boundary changes that moving Northeast Magnet to the new school would save $10 million to $12 million a year in operating expenses. The basis of the Kansas Open Meetings Law is the presumption of openness. If officials meet in a private, in private and make up their minds about how their vote and what-
Ma'am, I will interrupt you. First again, first of all, you are making accusations against the board. Just a moment, just hear me out. Now, we would love to hear your comments, but once again, no disrespect will be shown to the board members as we will not-
These are facts.
Just a moment. It is not a fact that we've met in private. I will ask you, please, to reframe your comments to a respectful tone to the board. We're more than happy to listen to you.
Okay, you interrupt. This is the second time you've interrupted me that I've spoken.
Ma'am, I am directing this, this meeting. Now, you will either-
That's, okay.
Just a moment. Sir, could you please come over? I will, once again, for the final time, remind the audience, there will be no further outbreaks, none. If we need to clear the room, we will clear the room. This board meeting is being held in public, but it is not for the public or of the public, and I hope you understand that. Again, I am asking your comments to please be respectful. No accusations are necessary.
So I can, can I continue, you know, now?
If you can continue within the line that I'm asking you to continue in, yes, you may.
Thank you.
But if you have accusations, I will interrupt, and I will ask you, please, to take your seat.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
In closing, I'll skip over some of that other stuff, but thank you. In closing, I would also like to remind school board members that you were elected by the people to serve in our best interest on this board. We, the people, have submitted to various board members, signed petitions by the people stating no to school closings. We, the people, participated in all four public forums held by the superintendent and board members stating no to school closings. We, the people, have come before the board at board meetings to say no to school closings. We, the people, have submitted letters to the editors, demonstrated with protest marches, sit-in protests, to say no to school closings. And the NAACP and the African-American Coalition held a press conference to say no to school closings. This board should start listening to what the people want, who elected them, and begin to work for the best interests of our children. Thank you. Mary Dean, Kansas justice advocate.
Our next speaker is Rachel Summerfield.
My daughter is in the second grade at Emerson Open Magnet. My son also is an Emerson graduate and now attends Robinson in the pre-IB program. Emerson is the reason why I defend Wichita Public Schools to my friends and family out of town. I've been asked numerous times before why we don't consider smaller, richer suburban school districts where I'm told my kids would have more opportunity. Emerson is that reason. Wichita gave me the choice to send my children to a small, close-knit school, like the one I grew up in, in much smaller communities. Emerson gave my children a community where every teacher knows the name of every kid, where parents help out in the classroom, and where my son can go back three years later and have nearly every teacher still remember his name and ask how school is doing, and remember the individual things he was involved in years before. Emerson has a community that I treasure, from fifth graders being seen not as big, scary kids to five-year-old kindergartners, but as friends who spend time together each week, reading together, to the weekly gathering called Community Time, where all students, staff, and dozens of parents come together to share awards, celebration, and a community that goes far beyond the reading, writing, and arithmetic of the classroom. These are the reasons why I chose Emerson. I choose Wichita Public Schools, and I choose not to take my family elsewhere. I'm also having a hard time understanding the math. When I'm told that Emerson operates for around $1.5 million a year, and it will take $24.3 million to open and operate five new schools, I don't see how closing such a cheap school will make a difference. While I realize every dollar counts, I hope the board will not make a short-sighted decision to close an efficient school by getting the short-term influx of cash provided by the state for operating a new school. I know as board members, you are struggling with some very difficult decisions, and I know that you are playing a very bad hand that was dealt to you by the governor and by our state, but I am asking you to slow down. We only learned about seven weeks ago that our school, Emerson, was on the possible chopping block. While the entire process has been going on for many months, I feel parents have not been given time to go out and try to say what they were told to go out and fight for. I make some darn good cinnamon rolls and homemade cookies, and I will bake to hold bake sales enough until my stove breaks, if that'll help save Emerson. I am willing to be part of the solution, but you have to give me time to help come up with one. School choice is not something I take lightly, and with a final decision set for March 5 and the school Choices Fair set for the 8th, with visitation at other schools also that week, I feel parents will not be given enough time to research and make a good school choice if you decide to close the schools. School choice is not something that I will rush into and get done, and I would say that any parent who values their child's education would agree with me. We're asking for time to make the right choice and hope that you will take the time to slow down and help all of the students reach the potential they can have. Finally-
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you.
I only ask that you give first choice on Magnet Schools.
Our next speaker is Jocelyn Gerson.
My name is Jocelyn, and I've been fighting for Bryant and Emerson, as all of you know, I'm sure. But tonight, I'm not really going to talk about the beauty of Bryant, or recite Emerson virtues, or intend to inform you about the annihilation of the Pure Magnet Choice in 259. I'm not going to mention the alarming lack of choice you've left me and a couple hundred other parents with, school uniforms, or a 15-to-20-minute drive, train schedule permitting, to a giant neighborhood school versus my small Pure Magnet school. That's not what I'm going to talk about tonight. I do want to say that since this started, I have defended all of you. Every time that somebody tries to say something bad about John Allison or a board member, I've been right there saying, "I don't think it's true. Brownback has done this to us. The board cares about us. They do this voluntarily." I'm saddened to say that I feel like my rose-colored glasses have been taken off by this process. Now, I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself, my personal history. I was not raised on the Bible and Jesus. I was raised on democracy and the Constitution. I could recite the preamble before I could say my, write my name. My divorced parents didn't agree on much, but they both challenged me to think about questions like, "Do the needs of one outweigh the needs of the many? Should they? Can one voice make a difference? Should it? Are you willing to sacrifice your comfort for justice?" I'm a child of democracy. "We, the people" is my John 3:16. So what you elected officials have scammed, skirted, dodged, and disregarded and ignored is my core belief system. I understand this discussion did start eighteen months ago. For me and my family, it only started a few months ago. For the friends and family that I have, it just started a few months ago. We haven't had time to process this. It hasn't been thought out. It hasn't been talked about. And you said, you know, "Come to the community meetings." They were a sham, and everyone in this room knows that. We came, we talked, and we don't feel like that was listened to. We don't feel like it was. It was, "Okay, now, anything else." And then we thought, "Okay, fine, they're going to talk about it at some point," and we've never seen that happen. We've seen it shot down every time that there's supposed to be a chance to talk and ask the questions that we want answered and to deal with the difficult decisions. Basically, I feel the community meetings were an old corporate trick that gave us a chance to vent and then go away while you did what you wanted to do anyway. Well, we didn't go away, and we aren't going away until we see democracy and equality brought back to our public school system. Thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Kelly Ryan.
Board members, as a parent of an Emerson student, I'm very frustrated and disappointed by what has happened the last two months. As parents, we've been to the community meetings, hoping to discuss our options and get our questions answered. We were told the questions would be answered on the website. The website would refer us to the community meetings. Our parents have proposed bringing Emerson under a charter school, which it is already set up to do, that would provide us with more state funding and keep our doors open. We've listed several resources within our Emerson community that would help bring down our already small operating cost. Can the board say nothing else has been done without looking into these suggestions? I also don't understand how you can call this a shared sacrifice when nobody else seems to be sacrificing. What other costs have been eliminated? Wasn't it appropriate choice to bring in RSP for hundreds of thousands of dollars? Have you looked into the validity of the state surplus that could be heading our way? Have all unnecessary expenses been cut? Can it really be called a shared sacrifice when you're closing my son's school and I still have to pay for a car and professional expenses? How is it appropriate to say nothing else can be done? Board member Lynn Rogers, you said in an interview what a shame it was that parents are thinking of pulling their children out of 259 because there are wonderful schools that our kids will be missing out on. I wholeheartedly agree. There are wonderful schools and wonderful teachers I know my son would love, and he would flourish in those schools. But the problem isn't the schools or the teachers. The problem is this. I don't dare put my child in another 259 school because the qualities I look for in a school are the qualities that have put Emerson on this list. Who's to say next year it won't be okay elementary or Riverside parents up here, fighting the same fight? Emerson was named after Ralph Waldo Emerson, who had this to say, "What you do speaks so loud, I cannot hear what you say. You say you care about these schools and quality education. Now is the time to do. Stop this process and let us help you do the work to keep them open. Engage our PTO committees. We have amazing, and as you can see, very passionate, parents that will do anything to keep these schools open. Use that resource. Let us actually take part in this process. Now is the time to do the work. Vote no."
Our next speaker is Walt Chapel. And you might want to let us know if you're here as an individual or as state representative.
I'll make sure that everyone has a chance to get the handout first.
Again, are you speaking to us as an individual?
You know, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, excuse me, I'm speaking as an elected official representing the city of Wichita on the State Board of Education.
Okay.
And it's my pleasure to be with you this evening on a very important topic. You are, each of you, as I am, elected to listen to our constituents, and this is a tough one. And I realize that every single one of you around this table is trying to weigh all the facts as you get them. But I wanted to speak tonight specifically about the children. I, as a parent, as a teacher of forty years, have very strong concerns about closing five schools in this district, and I'm sure you do too. So what I'm concerned about is the fact that it takes a combination of things to make this work. First of all, there's a team of teachers in every one of those buildings that has come together over a period of years to develop a learning community. When they do that, they provide their students a unique opportunity. And having been in Emerson off and on since 1993 and '94, I'm aware of the fact that that particular building has such good teaching staff and such an atmosphere for learning that students really excel. They're excited about coming to school every day, and their parents are excited about sending them there. So to break up that team, to take those children out and separate those teachers from each other, is a major, major undertaking. It'll be years before that kind of chemistry will come back together. Having gone to Bryant, looked it over, I'm sure you know as well as I do that we have very sincere teachers there as well that are working very hard with special education. That particular building has a new addition. There's new classrooms, at least five if I'm not mistaken, for special ed. Those children that come to that building are there for a reason. Their IEPs are specifically set up for the teaching staff and the equipment, facilities that are available there. So there again is another opportunity that if we take that school and just put the kids on a bus, those children will not benefit from the investment this community has already made in Bryant. You can go on to Northeast Magnet. Here's a unique opportunity near Wichita State, within walking distance of this university as well as the fire department. And I think we have an opportunity there to keep that school intact. It is wonderful that children are having that chance to come, but to put all those kids on a bus, and others as well, and bus them out to the furthest point in our district, and say that's somehow going to help them better, I don't see that. So the unintended consequences of closing these buildings is going to be very significant and very costly. The cost of busing these children all this time is going to be quite expensive. And I thank you for your time.
And thank you, but since you've chosen to speak to us as an elected State Board of Education representative, we are going to allow questions from board members. Our first speaker, a question is from Lynn Rogers.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chapel?
Mr. Chapel, as a state board member, how many times have you voted with the board to either restore the funding cuts that we've been experiencing or to increase our state funding? funding?
You know, that's an excellent question, but we, as a board, State Board of Education, have no authority over any-
No, 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 that's not what I asked. I asked, "The recommendations that they make each year, how many times have you voted with the state board?" They make a recommendation every year in terms of funding, in terms of what they think is the adequate amount that we need for our public schools.
The vote this last year in, is "Fund the law." That was the motion.
And how did you vote? Just, that's all I need, yes or no?
I'm sorry, I didn't realize we were at a trial here.
No, I'm just asking, I'm asking, how many times have you voted with the board, State Board of Education's request to fund our schools adequately?
The motion was to add $650 million to the taxpayers' bill on top of what we already had.
No, I'm asking, how many times did you vote-
I voted against adding $650 million more when we were already facing a $500 million deficit.
So you've never voted with the state board in terms of additional funding?
I voted not on that particular motion, correct. I have voted specifically to reduce the cost of education so the least $500 million is available to come back to our districts, including this one.
I just think it's very important for the board to understand that Mr. Chapel has not represented us in terms of what we desire and need and the funding that we need to have from the state level. So if you don't want to answer any, you know, further questions, that's fine, but thank you.
I'll be glad to respond to your accusation. I think that would be helpful, perhaps, for the constituents to know that we have choices to make at all levels, and this board also has a choice. Tonight, it's about closing schools, and to say it's all about economics instead of children is not the approach that I would take.
We have another question. Connie?
Thank you very much.
No, no response from the audience. I'm sorry. I, yes, I thought I had made that clear. Connie?
Mr. Chapel, I don't have a question, but I have a request. Earlier this evening, we were forced to vote to spend quite a considerable amount of money to provide tutoring for our students, and it's my understanding that the State Board of Education is a state organization that approves those tutoring organizations, those tutoring companies. I was asked during our break how much money we have to set aside, and we set aside $4 million to do this. So as our state board member, I would like to ask you to please put in place some checks and balances so that we, in fact, know that these organizations that you have approved as a state board member are, in fact, meeting the needs of our students and are answerable back to this community so we can authorize $4 million out of our Title I funds. Thank you, sir. And that's all. I don't have a question, I just have a request from you. Thank you very much.
And I would say to you, ma'am, that I've duly noted that and am going to make sure that comes up in our next topic, because we, as a board, have never had that come before us. We've never been asked to vote on that.
The state board approves it.
Good point you just made. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapel. Our next-